To do so. But are you ready?
Hi, hi.
Hey.
Good.
Let's go, let's go ahead and get started with our. Excuse me, our review of the agenda. Um, all the normal things, we are adding an executive session at the end, confirming that. And I think everything else made it on the agenda, right? We, we are, yes, uh, legal, legal matters. So we have the, uh, deferred item from the historic commission on their. On-call services contract, they've gotten that sorted out and it's in here. Uh, who can talk to us?
How do we? Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right, get a little closer here. All right, good afternoon, uh, mayor and council, just wanted to, um, I, tonight I have an item for you for an on-call services contract. Um, this is for, um, ASA, um, Archeo Spatial Analytics. Um, this will be, uh, again, on-call, so, um, for all the historic preservation commissions. Um, needs throughout the year, it is a one-year, um, contract. And the way that it would work, um, for each individual project that would, uh. The HPC would wanna, um, take on, uh, we would bring that project back before the city council for each individual one, so you can approve them individually. But this is, uh, kinda like the umbrella, um, contract to that, and I realized just before the meeting that, um, this contract may not have reached you. Um, I'm not sure, but I'm gonna hand those out to you now.
I think it's in the books, right? Is it different than what's in the book? Oh, I see, the detail.
Yeah, it just has some of the finer details, um, and it, of course, has the hourly rate, uh, fee schedule, um, things of that nature. Um, the HPC's, um, representative Allison Duncan is here, um, tonight as well, um, in case you have any questions, and also the, um. Proposed consultant is here as well, if you have questions.
All right, anybody have any questions?
Should we ask the, the committee chair to, the commission chair? Ms. Duncan to speak if she needs, wants to introduce this?
Happy to do that, Allison, you got anything you wanna share?
Hey, good afternoon, mayor and council, uh, we appreciate your consideration of this request. Um, we, uh, were very pleased to receive six proposals, um, for our request for, uh, qualifications. Um, as we reviewed as a commission, we had the same three firms that were our top three. Um, it was very valuable to have that discussion about the pros and cons of each firm. Um, and it helped us prioritize where we think as a commission, we can direct our time and resources in the coming year, uh, to make progress on a number of things. I'm very pleased to recommend Archaeospatial Analytics, their priority is going to be archaeology. Um, that is the foundation of, I think, anything we need to be doing going forward, we need to first understand, um, what's there. In the past, and some of the best way to do that is to kinda get down into the ground and see what we can find. Um, so that is, uh, our intent is to prioritize their work, um, for various archaeological projects on various city-owned sites. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have in regard to the, uh, to the proposal or the review, but we just really appreciate your consideration of this item.
Anybody? I mean, this is all back into this conversation that we've had about giving you guys some ability to. Allocate some funds toward things that you feel are important, it seems perfectly appropriate to me. Again, nobody else has any questions, thanks Allison.
Thank you.
Next is a first read on a. Little rezoning project, Mike, you wanna talk to us about that?
A little rezoning project?
Yeah.
Uh-huh, right, we have an application, as you've known for some time, we've had this application in hand, we've been waiting for the DRI process to, uh, resolve. Uh, the proposal is to rezone seven thousand eight hundred and forty-eight and a quarter. Do we wanna have our consultant present that? So, I can, while they're coming up. This is something we've been working on for quite some time, it all began, um, a year and a quarter ago with a joint meeting of city council and planning commission. Our consultants, um, led the groups through a process to identify areas of the code that they would like to change. Uh, over time and multiple meetings, um, uh, came up, but they proposed ordinance. Um, which, uh, went before city council in the fall, but some city council members thought it was a little premature. Um, and so, uh, we, we brought it back, um, with a, uh, kind of a new presentation of the information. And walked through it again, had the consultants walk through it again, and, um, we've arrived, um, finally at this point for first read.
Right.
So. Question, as to what level of depth council wants to go through this, I, or do you, are you all set with what you wanna?
No, well, good evening, um, I'm happy to answer any additional questions, as you said, we've had a joint work session, March, April, May, and June. And so I'm happy to go through anything additional, you all have quite a packet in front of you with regards to the UDC, so you have. The actual proposed amendment, then you have the red line with the rationale. And then you have. I'll just step back, and then you also have the, um, uh, recommendations and responses from, um, council member Lightsees letter. And so if there's anything that you would like to discuss, but if you had your rationale document open, the one that's redlined. You'll see that the changes that have occurred in the March, April, May, and June, those are shown in blue. The red is what was proposed all of last year and is still proposed, obviously now. So just, there are about, less than ten, but about, um. Nine or so changes that have occurred be- between March and June work session.
No, I know, and, 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 right, I get it, it's the channel in there, so anyway, we've, we've talked about this, it's all very well documented, but if people have other questions or anything else that we wanna talk about, now's a good time.
Yeah, and, and, um, two A. Which is, uh, page four. Number three says if the applicant is not the property owner, the owner shall certify by notarized signature that the applicant has the authority to file the application. So is this an insinuating, I could actually get permission from my neighbor to say, hey, if I can file this application. And not be the property owner. Could that kind of influence a side deal or something? I know, I know that sounds bad, but that's what I'm saying, it, it's similar to how, how developers do things, hey, I've got all this land, how about if I get the, get this permit? You know, if this works out, then w- we can. You know, we can, we can go ahead and have our transaction, because it says right there that, um. That if it's notarized, you have the, basically the authority to speak for somebody else. How, how does that work?
So, right, so that provision, that ability has been in from the beginning, you know, it's common for an applicant not to purchase a property before they get it rezoned. And so this fits that situation exactly, we've had quite a few come through, um, our city where the, the purchase doesn't close. Until after the rezoning application, their contract with the, uh, with the seller is contingent upon the, uh, the approval of the rezoning. Um, so it fits.
Yeah, and I, and I realize that, I've got, I guess I've always just, just assumed, and this is my fault. I'd assume that what they're asking for, a permit for, would be, they would actually own it, so that's, that's, but either way, so, I am reading that right, thank you.
And we have forms, um, uh, they're actually not in this packet for first read, but you see them, um, they'll be, uh, in the packet for the next one. Um, the affidavits and, and, and the owner's signatures and, um, uh, giving permission, um, the signature that gives the applicant permission to.
No, you answered my question, you did, thank you.
Everybody got anything else? Again, feels like we've, we've gone through this quite a bit, so thanks very much, Shannon, and we'll move on to. Another thing.
A little rezoning?
A little rezoning, yeah.
So again, little less than eight thousand acres, seven thousand eight hundred and forty-eight point two-five acres, um, all currently zoned RL. Um, seventy parcels in total, bounded roughly, I don't know that you need me to tell you this, but the Chattahoochee River on the west, Campbellton Fairburn Road. Um, on the north, and the Parkway on the south, although seven hundred acres are on the south side of the Parkway. The eastern border is, uh, is jagged, doesn't have any, any particular boundary, it's all, um, west of one fifty-four. Uh, Cascade Palmetto, um, obviously you could, you've, you've seen it on the maps, you've seen it in the materials. Then the future development map, uh, in the comprehensive plan, most of it is preferred agricultural and rural residential area. Um, the area around the Parkway is preferred village area, and then there are parts of the property that are, um, located in two crossroads communities, the Rico Crossroads Community. And the Campbellton Crossroads Community. Uh, hamlets are allowed in, in any of those areas. Uh, I guess I'll skip ahead a little bit, you see on the plan, in the Campbellton area, they're showing some development right up along the road. That's consistent with what we're looking for in the crossroads community, um, we will need, uh, some additional process in order for that to, um, to be allowed because of the, uh, the buffer requirements. There are several routes, uh, that we can take, assuming city council actually wants to see that, that way. Um, city council could unilaterally, um, uh, adopt a text amendment excluding that road, uh, from the buffer requirements for hamlets. Or could of its own initiative in cooperation, uh, with the applicant, uh, rezone a portion of that property near the road to historic crossroads. Um, or the applicant could, um, uh, apply for a variance to reduce the buffers in that area where we've already identified. Um, a development style, uh, without, uh, buffers, so there are several routes that can happen. It'll be a little while before, it'll be some years probably before any development happens up there, so there's, there's time to make that, um, happen. Um, sorry, that's maybe getting a little ahead. Um, uh, the site has, uh, about, just under ten miles of Chattahoochee river frontage. Um, much of that river frontage is floodplain, and everything within two thousand feet of the river is subject to state regulation under the Metropolitan River Protection Act. And so the development will have to go to, um, ARC for, um, Metropolitan River Protection Act or MRPA review. Um, so that'll happen at the development phase, when they're in for land disturbance permits and building permits. But the, uh, MRPA regulations, um, tied to a plan for the river. Um, will limit the amount of land disturbance allowed in that area and the amount of impervious cover allowed in that area. My understanding is that the applicant team has already been in touch with the MRPA office and feels like they have a pretty good handle on it, but there will need to be a formal review, uh, before development in that area happens. The applicant team has broken the property into four planning areas, uh, the memo, um, talks about the four different planning areas separately. Uh, the east planning area is that part up at the top where the horse, uh, farm is, and that's where they're gonna begin. Um, in the DRI, they identified, uh, nine phases, the first six are all in that area. Um, so they really only detailed out the first seven phases in the DRI. The first six are in that east area, the seventh phase is in the central area, um, which you can see just a little, um, a little farther down the river, it's the smallest of the, uh, of those planning areas. For the, uh, eighth and ninth phases, which are located in the west planning area and the central planning area. Additional work will need to be done, those are so far out on the calendar, um, uh, we don't have the detail for those, so in the DRI review. Uh, it is specifically, uh, written that before development happens in those phases, another DRI needs to be submitted. Uh, so they'll have to go through the DRI process again before getting to those, uh, later phases. And the way that, uh, the proposed conditions will be written, that attached to the concept plan approval attached to this project. Um, the concept plan approval will not include those phases either, so they'll have to come back for ci- to city council for approval of a concept plan for those phases. So there's, there's more work to be done on those phases, and that will be, um. Well, I don't know exactly how to predict, it'll be ten or more years in the future. Um, so it's a long time before that happens, unless some, something happens in the market and they develop out a sequence, in which case they'll have to come back for that permission anyway. Um, so, so, uh, uh, we're, we're looking a little ways out for, um, for that. Um, seven thousand eight hundred and forty-eight acres will require, um, over five thousand four hundred and ninety-three acres preserved as open space and civic space. They plan, uh, eight thousand three hundred and eighty-four total residential units, which will require the purchase of TDRs, they have. Um, reserved development rights off of the, uh, reservoir property. Um, we don't know if the reservoir is actually gonna happen, but when it was transferred to the reservoir authority, uh, the owner, the applicant, the owner. Uh, reserved those rights, and they also own, uh, other land in the city that they will, um, uh, strip development rights off of for TDRs, so that'll make up. The, uh, the difference in, in those numbers. I already mentioned the Campbellton Historic Crossroads issue. And the need for further DRI review, uh, land in the, uh, covered in the area has been through a number of planning processes in the past. It was the subject of a two thousand four livable centers initiative plan, a title of the Chattahoochee Hill Country, a model sustainable village. Uh, which, um, involved the community here in Chattahoochee Hills, actually before we were a city, but it was the locals. Um, uh, that, that worked together to put together a plan for a, a village on that land, and that is the, um. I'm sorry, I called that the central phase, the west and south phase, um, so it's in the south phase, uh, the west and the south phase are the two phases that I was referring to that need, need further work. Central is, is, uh, is in, is phase seven, one of the ones where they've, they provided the detail. Uh, there was also a two thousand eleven, um, South Fulton Parkway Access Management Study that GDOT, uh, uh, put together. And it identified, uh, the location that is straddled by this property as a location for another intersection. On, on South Fulton Parkway, the, the work of that study was to, um, limit additional access, but they identified this as a, an appropriate spot. Uh, the PATH Foundation's two thousand three Chattahoochee Hill Country Regional Greenway Trail Master Plan. Um, includes trails, uh, shown in a lot of the site, and then many of those trails are also, um, shown in the Riverland Study, which was, um, uh, just completed recently. And then finally, the Historic Campbellton Crossroads Framework Plan treats the, the Campbellton, uh, historic crossroads up in the, uh, at the northern end of the project. That I was referring to where, um, uh, some additional action will, will have to happen in order to create, to develop according to what's planned in that framework plan. So that's, uh, that's the basics, um, you can find online, uh, the traffic study. And the DRI, uh, review materials, um, including ARC's regional review finding. And the, um, GRETA, Georgia Regional Transportation Authority, notice of decision, um, those links are provided at the end of the memo in the packet. Um, and, uh, you can find them through the community development page online. And of course, this is just a first read, we'll have hearings at the, in the planning commission, uh, a week from Thursday, the tenth. Uh, the meeting is at seven o'clock, work session at six, and then, of course, back here in city council, August fifth, at your next regular meeting, uh, will be, uh, another, another hearing.
Now, we've got a representative from the applicant here, if there's anything that you'd like to say really quickly, or at least make yourself available for questions?
I'll do both. Um, so I know that sounds like a lot, I knew I could count on Mike to give you all the facts, but what he couldn't do is tell you what DMV really is, so. Uh, you know, I'm sure you're not familiar with us from any past endeavors we've done, we haven't been a big national presence or anything. But we've been around for forty years, doing what we do, which is take land and turn it into a beautiful community. Um, we say in our tagline, we have a passion for great places, and we are so excited to have this become a great place. Um, we, uh, have history with doing this very thing. I joined, whoops, the company in, um. In two thousand four, and at that time, we had a grand opening that weekend for our Verado community in Buckeye, Arizona. And I'm sure you've probably never heard of Buckeye, Arizona, but it was a little farming town. And now it's a thriving metropolis, basically. Um, because we, um, generated quite a bit of economic development for them. And so what we tried to do is come in and do responsible development, create opportunities for communities to thrive. And mitigate the impacts that we have on communities, and so. Uh, what happened in Buckeye, Arizona, they didn't have any, uh, roadmap for us to follow, and we went in at the same stage that we are now. Before you. When we've got raw land that's been around forever, a bit of development on it with, uh, Carl Buchart's, um, responsible acquisitions of land and planning. But, um, and the past endeavors that he did involve the community and what could happen here. But, really, it's a blank piece of paper until we came along to create this plan on the wall. And to do something this big requires a huge upfront investment. We need some level of certainty as to what we can do here. We know we can't ask you to approve everything that's ever gonna happen here today. But we have to get started with a framework. And the beauty of this city as opposed to Buckeye, Arizona, is that you've got a framework. We understand that this UDC was intended to allow this very thing that we're trying to do, to create opportunity for the city. So that's what we're here to do today, um, is to just introduce you to us for the first time. We invite you to call any of the cities that we've developed in, we do this every time we come to a new city. Please let me know if you'd like to have a contact, we don't set anything up, we just say. Here's the person that would know the most about our development, I encourage you to do that. Um, because you'll find out that everywhere we go, we do preserve open space, we do create opportunity, and we do follow the rules. So, I just wanted you to be aware of that, we know we have to prove it to you, but, um, I, I look forward to doing that. Um, the other thing that's important for you to realize is we've already talked to the community a lot. We had two big public meetings, we've had a couple of, um, HOA presentations as well. And we've listened, and we continue to listen, and that's really what the website's about. Every week we get more comments on the website that we respond to. So that conversation with the people of Chattahoochee Hills is happening in real time. And, um, we're going to encourage all of that. Some of the things we've heard wouldn't surprise you, you know, everybody wants contact with the river, everybody wants us to preserve the open space, which of course we have to do anyway under the UDC. But, um, you know. Hearing from people about how important it is to think about the people that can't recreate on nature trails. They need some regular opportunities in parks, especially for little children and elderly people. To incorporate those kinds of thinking, so we can't, we have to get past the big picture and really get to those little details that people care about. They also are very much looking forward to the retail opportunities, services, opportunities that a community of this size can bring. And it doesn't happen right away, but we do care about making sure we get the public safety things right, right away. We have a brand-new community in northern Cal- or central California. Where we, um, pioneered a temporary fire station, and it's already staffed with a city that didn't have a lot of resources, but they found a way. And, you know, with the fire dangers in California, that was their biggest priority. So we look for priorities that you have, and we will listen to what we can do to help solve those. So with that, any questions, I'm sure you have a million of them, but.
And, and that's the thing, fire away, but.
I do, I, I wanted to start out with the, with just the east, uh, phase one. How many residential units are gonna be in that particular phase, I read five hundred or something?
Uh, well, the first phase, we tend to do three to five hundred initially, but we sub-phase, east is a bigger phase than that. But we do sub-phase, and in our plan, I think it's around nineteen, somebody help me with the.
So, so, so really all, by the time this whole thing is, is built out, we're looking at about eighty-three hundred places where people live.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Well, that's. That's what's got me confused, because the, the ARC report. Says that we're gonna have, um, well, it breaks it down as a construct mixed-use project with eighty-five twenty-seven detached single-family units. Then it says another sixteen seventy-seven attached single-family units, sixty-six hundred and twenty-four multifamily units. And it just goes on and on, but when I add that up.
It's more than that.
Comes up to sixteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight, and when I do the math on, uh, when I'm done, you can respond. Uh, when I do the math, it, it, uh, like three point five or three point six, I mean, we're talking. Fifty-eight to, what, seventy thousand people? Is that, is that correct, or is this?
It is incorrect, so.
This is wrong?
Saw that, I said, what in the world does it mean, no, I, I was equally confused, and it is incorrect, and it was corrected on the record, so.
So I need a new ARC report?
You do need a new ARC report, we did correct.
When I see that, I'll continue my discussion, thank you.
Absolutely, we'll make sure you get it.
Thank you.
So.
I'm sorry, Camille, go ahead, you're good, no, I'm fine.
No, I just, I was able to attend one of the meetings, and I really thought that was a, um, I thought they were well-attended, and, and I'm. Appreciate the fact that y'all are responding online, I think. Something. Something like this, it, it has made total sense to do it early on, too. So I'm hoping in our future, we see other folks that, that extend that offer. So thank you.
Appreciate that, we did have about two hundred people that attended the two sessions, so.
Uh, can you speak, you, you mentioned that one of the things that you all try to do is, is mitigate impact on the existing community. And I wonder if you could speak to those plans, because I think that's, you know, as, as much as the focus has been on what you all plan to do on this property. Uh, I think people are, you know. Since most of the city, of course, doesn't live on that property, there's a great deal of concern about what happens to them and their property, and. So I wonder if you could speak to some of the categories in which you're, you're planning mitigation efforts and describe those to some extent?
Sure, I mean, we're at the very early stages, but definitely. The, um, buffers around the community that we're required to do at the borders is a big mitigation effort. Um, the other thing is traffic, uh, we obviously have a notice of decision and have to follow the recommendations in that notice of decision. Um, we don't have a lot that we have to do to start, because the impact. Will happen over a long period of time, and things around that are planned now may or may not happen, that would add to the traffic that we generate. So it's hard to do a traffic study for a twenty or thirty-year, um, timeframe. But, uh, as I believe Mike mentioned, you know, we will be back for you, there's no question of that. Whatever we decide to build in a map, a concept plan today, won't happen, we know that. Um, but something like it will, um, because we respond to the market, we respond to what our home builders want. We don't build houses, by the way, in case there's any confusion about that. We, uh, do finished lots, and sometimes we rarely, but sometimes do parcel, uh, a, a sale of a parcel of land to a builder. Who's going to do something special. Um, and sometimes that's an age-restricted, uh, community with a special target market. Um, one of the quality developers in that area might wanna do their own thing on, on some land instead of just buying lots from us, so. We do that occasionally, but for the most part, we sell finished lots to builders, and we build the amenities that everybody enjoys in it. So that's our role, and we come in here and get the upfront approv- approvals to do both of those things.
I've just been happy to see, as we've been talking through this stuff, is both the commitment to the trails and the interconnectivity around that kind of thing. And also the inner road network that you guys have built to the point of mitigation, you know, keeping the traffic inside the community rather than outside's a big piece, and, and that's all been. Built into the plans I've seen, sorry, we have this ghost that kind of comes in and out of the sound system every now and then.
I'm sure it's not personal, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sure it is.
No, um, I do think that that's a really important thing that we heard, that people want to see a way to get around the community without getting in a car. And certainly, uh, we always say bicycles and trails, and, um, everybody can't do that. So we have to have these other kinds of vehicles that we allow, but it's a safety issue, so it's a trade-off. You know, you can only do that in certain places, and create lanes maybe for that, parking spaces for that, to encourage people to do golf carts or what other, uh, EVs that. That come up.
I know that, you know, when we get into the next meeting, we'll have all the conditions and all that in front of us, too, that we can talk about. That pull in the DRI information and, you know, all of the other pieces.
We're honored to be here, and I appreciate your time.
Sorry, Scott, go ahead.
No, no, uh, well, just question for Mike about, uh, you know, a review of this, this is, this is obviously a massive. Project, the, uh. You know, the number, the number of residents. For this project exceeds by a considerable amount the entire population of Peachtree City, and. So this is, you know, we're talking about an enormous scope here that's gonna have, you know, again, you know, we talk about. I, I think we have to be careful about talking about the effects of this as being, you know, gradual and over many years, and so. But as if that spreads out the impact, but I think what it does is it spreads out. But I think what it does is it spreads out the impact. It's that we'll, we will constantly be affected by this until everyone in this room is dead. And so the, this is decades of, of effect on, on our community as it changes. And, and you know, looking back at some of the, of the other big development stuff that's come down the pipeline in the last few years and all of the contention and angst around that. I wonder if we, have we secured outside advising from, from firms with the, you know, the whole range of competencies to advise the city on this? Or do we have plans to do that? Or I think if not, I think that should be part of our discussion.
Of course, the traffic was reviewed in the, in the DRI, but those have been the only outside review.
Right. But I mean, hiring, you know, hiring shops with a variety of engineering concerns that would be our advocates in this because as, as is often pointed out, the whole ours, you know, we have good staff, but overworked staff and you know, a small overworked staff. We have, we're hiring outside competencies. For example, Ms. Duncan just stood up and pointed out that we took bids for historic commission. And I believe we also have bids in for the Tourism Bureau activity. And I would argue to all of my colleagues that, that this, this issue would be substantially more impactful on everybody's lives in the entire city. Not to diminish in any way those two commissions, but to suggest that, that hiring outside competencies, experts in the fields that need to be addressed as advocates for the city in this ongoing process. I think we really need to, to have a motion to acquire. And, and I can speak to, to that later, but I just want to bring that up because it's, and I think of, you know, just now we heard that the DRI came in and we say, well, they did the DRI. Well, they, I mean, all of us freaked out when we read that second page and saw 16,000 residences. So that was a mistake that was caught and corrected. I don't, I, and nobody here has the competency to point out what other mistakes may have been made. And so I think if we have our, our own firms hired or firm or firms hired that can advise us in that and work on our behalf through that, I think we would be, that's the least service we can offer the public in this city.
So for most of the aspects of the project, the engineering hasn't been done yet. Really the traffic is the only way. And we have talked to our reviewing engineer who we do bring in at the land development phase, the outside engineering firm. And I have spoken with them about reviewing the DRI materials on our behalf and in the context of the other traffic studies that have been done in the city and our overall, the sort of the big, big picture. So I do expect to be getting some of that from them on the traffic specifically. But for the most part, we don't have any engineering available to cover things like stormwater and erosion control and those other sorts of impacts. Because until, until you have the engineering work by the applicant, there's nothing really to, to respond to.
Right. But I think making the effort to prepare for that, you know, it costs the city nothing. Put out bids and collect bids and get, get things in place so that, and, and again, just speaking to, I mean, I know for my own part as a expert in 600 year old poetry, I am being asked to make huge decisions that affect people who haven't even been born here yet. And, and I would love to get advice on that. We need a, we need a, yes, Rodney suggests we get a list of the kinds of firms that we might need to get hold of and.
And we do bring them in oftentimes when there is, you know, engineering to review stormwater experts or whatever. We're not at that stage in this project. I mean, I think one of the things that you're talking about too, is just the impact of our zoning on the city in terms of population and stuff like that. And that's all baked in from the comprehensive plan. Like we had a lot of expert advising around that that came up with the zoning. But the technical points I think get addressed as they come in. This is not that point in the conversation really. But again, let's get them together and if there are ones that we don't have, right, we, we can have the list ready.
Yeah. And I, and I think there's a good argument for get, for getting that in motion because of, of that. The fact that we're, we're talking about approving this, this gigantic project for which, you know, I, I would argue that none of us has the competency to see forward through the impacts. I mean, what is, you know, you can put all the roundabouts and turn signals and so on. But if you put Peachtree City traffic in Chattahoochee Hills, what are we looking at? We should know that. We should, we should have a sense of that. And, and, and there are so many other things that we, that I don't, you know, we don't know what we don't know in many ways. And so I think that would be help. We can come back to that, but I just wanted to throw that out there for.
Anybody else? Ruby?
Yeah. Oh, Ruby, go ahead. No, no, you go. Okay. I mean, I will agree with Scott, you know, you, you have to, this is Peachtree City that you're dropping in your backyard. That's a fact. That's a, that's just a simple math equation on population. That's all that is. So what you have to do is, you know, next time you ride around your town, this is what 33, 3,400 people look like. What does that look like? I can tell you it doesn't look like what we signed up for. I know that. Another concern I do have is, is the traffic study. You're right. I've been looking into that because the first time we got one that was found after three years, we noticed it had 26 traffic changes, you know? Just so everybody understands, the NOD, that is the final say so from Greta. That's, that's the way it is. That's the Georgia Regional Transportation Authority. We all know that on page 14 of the NOD, it has a list of intersections and road improvements. This would be turn lanes, signals, roundabouts, all that. Okay? That is a phenomenal list. Okay? The Boukart team says they will collaborate with us with, well, of course with the local municipality and GDOT as it pertains to additional analysis if needed. What, what I'm afraid of is we learned from the Murrell application in the DRI about 26 road improvements that must happen. The thing that's funny, if you look at the one in Palmetto, if you remember that project had land in both, both of its country. Not Palmetto didn't need not one road change. It was all on us because they reach out to those four or five mile areas to see where that impact's going to be. And when you ride around our town, you'll see we have two lane roads. That puts every road on, on the map depending on where the development is to be extended or have something done to it. Anyway, since that project has been turned down, put on hold or whatever we're doing with that right now. It's just currently not happening. Looking at the current NOD on the Boukart development, it includes a lot of road improvements required in the Murrell decision. We must have a new traffic study to determine what Greta finds to be the mandatory changes based on our current situation. The Murrell project ain't happening. So when you look at the NOD, some of those roads cross overs if they've been done. They are not going to be done. Merrill is not developing right now. So, and you know, just here in the last, what 20 minutes, we've been talking about this. I learned I've got a wrong ARC report that's dated May 29th of this year. Wow, I've got something else wrong over here on traffic. And now, now I know because this project wasn't done, I need a new traffic study. Because the one that we learned about wasn't even on the ground. It wasn't even near this size, you know, you know, that little Rico development, everybody got upset about last month. That's only 2% the size of this one. That's it. So that's what's at stake right here, but, but even, I mean, it could go, you may have the votes. But like Scott Lightsey said, you know, if something like this is going to take 10, 15, 20 years. Right now, we do need some experts in the room. I've never put together a city like Peachtree City. Nobody else up here has. But this is, like you said, we're at the beginning stages. I don't even know how we're even ready for a first read. We don't even have a complete packet with accurate information. But yes, I will be requesting a brand new traffic study in lights of the changes in, in our city with these last two projects. One's got a six month deferral that Nolan Boyd's that one. The village application is set on hold or whatever's going on with that. So right now what I need is some accurate information. And one thing too, you gotta be aware of roundabouts, you know, that's, you know, it's crazy. You kind of get a free educational roads and stuff doing this. You never, never would have thought that. Who would have known? But you know, they added those two headed back, the back way to Frank's, those two roundabouts right there in Palmetto. Take a look at those. You got three people lost their whole front yard. And one guy, see, it's not just a roundabout. The state gets another 15 or 20 feet outside that roundabout. Road you get to drive on, they still got to ride away. So if, if I have a traffic report that tells me that I'm going to be affecting, you know, possibly every crossroad in my city, I think people need to know about that. I think we need to have a discussion. I think we need to decide if that's even what we want to do. And this is jumping the cart before the horse is what this is. We, we've, Mr. Lightsey's been talking about process now. I remember Tori Betis did it for two or three years. We still don't have it. We're being handed incomplete documents and been told it's been corrected. That won't work anymore. I've, I've been hearing about corrections now for 10 years. Got Kettering going, tell us about another 10 tonight. That's all I got.
If, if, if I may, there are a couple of references to the, the Merrill Park rezoning that was denied in the city. But all but I believe two of them are for the Merrill Park Palmetto development, which was approved years ago. And the two that refer to the Palmetto, I'm sorry, the Chat Hills Merrill Park development are way out on, they're not in the city. They're way out on Roosevelt Highway and I gotta find the other one, but they're, they're not here in the city.
Well, let me ask you this, Mike, by Phase Three of that NOD number 51. It says Hutchinson Ferry and Cockermill intersection must be done. That's what it says. Or the city will be responsible at that point, knowing that intersection encompasses, well, Mr. Robert Richardson's land and his family's land. Also knowing there is no intention of him selling his land. Does that mean the state steps in based on population, based on the fact it needs to be there? Or does that mean the city exercises its right to pursue intimate domain process on citizens? Do you miss that? I was talking to you. You know, I can reread it.
Richie.
Richie, quit being so obnoxious.
No, he looked at me like he, like he was like.
Look, you're talking.
He's about to respond. Stop. Please, please, go ahead.
So until, so first of all, that intersection improvement refers to, and I didn't find the page you're referring to. So sorry about that, but I know that that intersection was included in the, in the DRI for the Merrill Park Palmetto project.
Correct.
Right. And so if the city were to, it's city roads. So it's the city's decision when to make improvements on, on that intersection. Engineering would be done at that time. There's no way to know now what that improvement might be or what sort of property it might take. Sometimes roundabouts, I don't know if you've noticed the one over on Rivertown headed over, over toward Fairburn, right? That, that roundabout is entirely outside of the original right of way, right? And so you could put an, a roundabout. It doesn't have to be at any particular place and it doesn't have to be any particular size. You can create a roundabout that's small and takes up the same space as a regular intersection. Depends on how much traffic has to, has to handle. There are a lot of factors, right? But at this point, I don't think there's any way to know.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm just going by what the NOD says and that's what it says.
I think, yeah, again, I did find it today, but yeah, it's referring to the, the NOD for the Palmetto project. Right.
Well, my question is at that particular point, if a project like this passes and, and we do take on, you know, 40,000 people and as people continue to move here, Steve's continuing to develop, there comes a point where the state steps in and tells you what you have to do. And at that point, at every crossroad in our city.
No, the state does not step in and tell you what you have to do on your city roads.
Okay. Anyway, at that point, everywhere a roundabout would be or a change on a road, we will be taking people's land. Whether we move it over to the left, to the right. That's all I'm saying. In our roads, there's not a lot of space there. So, and I'll end it with this. All I want to see is a brand new traffic study since two developments that turned in one have acquired whatever they were told to do is not going to be done. I need to know exactly what Greta and them are asking for. Thank you.
Just a couple of other points while we're at it, you know, the, again, the way that our zoning was done, the way the comprehensive plan looks at the city, you can't pretend that it wasn't expected. The development of this kind of scale was going to happen because that was always considered from the very beginning of the city's existence. Question was always when, right? Exactly what it was going to look, exactly what spot, but it was always going to happen. Also, just for clarity's sake, 8,000 some units of housing at two and a half, 2.7, whatever it is that we think people are doing is 25,000 maybe people. Peachtree City is 40,000. Peachtree City doesn't require mixed use in the way that we do. So Peachtree City's residential districts, everybody has to get in their car and drive to everything. So there's a lot more external impact, right? There's a lot built into our zoning that mitigates those impacts already. And there are absolutely things they have to look at, right? What the traffic impacts are going to be over the course of time and all of that. And each time when you get there, you decide how it's going to be handled. Engineers will decide those things at the time. Nobody wants to sell their land. It gets harder, but you know, you can address those things too with things like traffic lights. It's not the way that we like to do them in Chattahoochee Hills, but there are a lot of things that you can do to mitigate traffic impact. So it's, it's fine to have the concerns, but let's please try to deal with these things from the perspective of the actual facts of our zoning and the law and history, right? And again, speaking as someone who's been involved in those conversations for 20 years, I can speak to some of that history in ways that people that haven't been can't. And I just want to make sure that that becomes a part of the conversation too, as we're talking about it. Anybody else have any questions for Mike or for the applicant while they're here?
So do you feel asking for an accurate traffic study is too much, ma'am? Cause that's what I would like to see and my citizens would like to see and I represent them.
So ARC corrected the report. Greta had the correct report. This is an accurate traffic study is my belief as I stand here. And so I don't think we need another because we can't know what's going to happen on the Merrill. Just can't know that as we stand here today. And I appreciate your concern, who's going to build these things if they, if that development doesn't? But that's what cities always grapple with. We're only legally charged with our impacts, not impacts that go beyond what we're causing. And we're not developing more than 30% of this property. Carl Boukart set this up a long time ago that so much of this land is going to be open space permanently saved from all these applications you could face if he wasn't that type of guy. And so that plan, look at all the green on it. It, it's got all by itself, a lot of mitigation built into it. So I, I want to be respectful of what you need to be comfortable. I really do. But I don't think a new traffic study is necessary based on the work that went into this one. I mean, Greta's team worked tirelessly nights and weekends to get it to us so that we could make this.
And they did, they did, they did work tirelessly. But, but what they did not know is that those two projects were not going to go. So right now they are on hold. Right now, what's on the table is your project. So for me and my citizens, I need to see a, a new traffic study which indicates, and then we'll have an accurate one because right now we don't. That one was based off of other ones that were done. Some roads do cross. That's all I'm asking for. And it said right there in that you would be happy to comply with that.
Well, we can see if they could supplement the study and just indicate with that traffic being gone.
I mean, again, to be clear, the only thing that that might do is reduce the impacts and the mitigations required, right?
Exactly.
I mean, the reality is that those traffic studies include impacts from things like Friendship Village that was on 20 years ago that haven't started yet, right? I mean, the reality to your point is you never know when those impacts are actually going to happen because you never know what people's actual development cycles are.
We work in your favor also.
That's my point. My point is what you're saying is it works in our favor. So I don't, there's, there's not a need to do it again because if anything, there's less impact.
My name is Marcus Prius. I work with Atwell. We were part of the team that did the DRI process and to address some of your concerns, there is language that's written directly within the NOD that describes when a development in another DRI does not develop their traffic improvements. We have to go back to Greta. We have to go back to Greta, to the city, to determine what needs to be done to mitigate now that those changes aren't happening. What is our specific effect without theirs? So it changes, it changes the equation that you have to work with, because we are still adding, but now they aren't. So the direction of travel is different for that development versus ours, so there is.
I truly understand every bit of that. All I'm saying is two developments were taken off the table that had traffic studies done, they were given requirements to do. They're gone. And there's, I just need, I just need one traffic study from you that they know those were gone, that shows the accurate roads and intersections and everything that has to be changed.
And as part of the N O D, we will be required to reanalyze the impacts without those developments. That's written into, that's written at, into the N O D.
Okay, we'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, we've got a couple of other items uh, on the regular agenda, and then we've got several work session items too, so try to buzz through. Uh, next up is our T S P L O S and L M I G uh, stuff, I don't know whether that's Darryl or Robbie talking about that.
Yeah, it's a combination, Mayor, uh, yeah, exciting time of the year, it is July first, so run out of time to me, because we want to get the paving going, but this is the, the new T S P L O S project that we uh, put out for bid. Uh, Keck and Wood went out and put out the bid, and so it, we had seven bidders come here, sitting in this room where we're at today. Uh, which is pretty exciting, there are a lot of bidders, and it ranged from one point eight million to about two point six million uh, from the bids. And, you know, the lowest bid came in at one point eight two, which we're, Darryl and I were like, hold on, that's pretty low, and uh, we, our engineer went back and had to basically, you know, we didn't, we didn't recommend anyone at that particular time, we weren't going to. We told them, all right, we gotta go back and analyze it, and our engineer, uh, Ken Peters went back and analyzed it and said, okay, the lowest bidder is responsible, is a bond is in place. And uh, we, he recommends awarding to Shep Co. and uh, a few guys pass it tonight, I'll give them a notice to proceed. Uh, a letter, notice to proceed as soon as possible, and then they'll start getting mobilized and such for that T S P L O S project. And we don't have enough T S P L O S funds right now to do the whole thing, but we do have uh, enough, but actually about half, but as you know, we budgeted capital to cover those expenses. So with the combination of capital and L M I G local maintenance improvement grant and T S P L O S, we're going to be able to do this uh, this T S P L O S project.
All right, any questions about that? Uh, next up is, uh, it's a small detail, when the original I G A with uh, Fulton County over the sewer thing was done, the way that the insurance uh, was characterized was not correct based on how Fulton County is actually doing it. Rick, do you want to say anything else about that?
Buyer insurance.
Right, it's just dealing with, was it insured or self-insured, and so they just need to uh, had to change the, the language in there, so that's all it is, just technical with uh, insurance or self-insurance.
But it, it's something that they wanted us to run back through council so that it was all correct wording that was adopted. Anybody have any questions about that? Uh, and then the next one is about the amicus brief on the Milton lawsuit, Rick.
Right, if you recall, council uh, requested probably about six months ago to join in uh, an amicus brief uh, with the city of Milton uh, before asking for the Supreme Court of Georgia to accept what's called certiorari, meaning they will hear an appeal from the Court of Appeals. Uh, that was granted about a, a week or so ago. And so now uh, Milton's asking us again to join an amicus brief, and which will be setting forth the, the issues before the Supreme Court. Supreme Court had three questions, and Milton is going to um, address those, so they just asked us to join. Uh, and so tonight, the uh, question for council be yes, we will, or no, we won't. And then the brief will actually come to me and I'll review it, and for uh, if we'll sign, sign along with them.
Any questions about that? All right, let's move on to our, our work session items, uh, several there, uh, millage rate recommendation, Robbie.
Uh, yes, sir, Mayor Council, this is uh, exciting little calculation that we were able to do, and we got the, the, the digest from the county. Uh, we, I did a calculation on what's called a P T thirty-two point one form, and it came out to be about eight point two one. We're at eight point two right now, so I need to back up, the millage rate is eight point two. Uh, you guys reduced it several times over the, the last several years. And the calculation came back, it would be eight point two one, which is a little bit higher. Um, but because we don't know what's going to happen with the floating local option sales tax yet, we got a meeting tomorrow in, in actually Coweta. We've already had a meeting with Fulton County, because that's the, the reduction, the, the floating local option sales tax. Uh, so, but I think the safest thing to do is to keep it at eight point two, it ends up being a point one two pers- point one two percent reduction in millage. Uh, so advertising, you don't have to advertise a millage rate increase, we still have to go through the public hearing process. But Fulton County has already called me, uh, hey, when are you going to pass the millage rate? And I said, it's going for the council on the work session, it's going to go August fifth to the council, so that's when the millage rate will be adopted. Uh, myself and the city clerk will be working on the advertising to make sure it's in the paper and posted correctly, and the public hearings uh, are, are posted correctly, so we can have the millage rate adopted on August fifth at eight point two. Unless the mayor and council, you want to go a different direction, up or down, it's up to you. But the calculations in there also, I'm sorry, Mayor, i- it, it also estimates, you know, what you anticipate in property taxes and such with that millage rate.
And that's supposed to be the budget based on that millage rate, so it makes sense that we should keep it there. It is a happy thing to me to see that we've, you know, once again, tiny rollback, but it's a rollback of the rate. And even though our rate has rolled back again and again and again over the course of the time since I've been here, uh, our taxes, our, our overall income between all the taxes and all the fees that we've now signed up for and are getting is what? Three or four times what it used to be, it's pretty impressive.
Robbie, I have a question on, on the homestead. I know that Fulton County give a homestead, so the homestead for the city, does it stay at the same amount that Fulton County? Or does it change based on city?
Yeah, there are several homestead exemptions in place, um, you know, when you file, you can have a senior homestead exemption, or you can have homestead when you get to a certain age, but the basic homestead still in play is the same for the city, we have it, that hasn't changed at all.
Right, so if, I'm just saying, like, if um, Fulton County give you, if it's that two eight six six or something, when they get to the city part, do they give you that same homestead, or do you guys break it down in a different percentage? Do you kind of see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure I understand your question, I probably hear anything wrong. But yeah, I'll, I'll be happy to help you with that.
Okay.
Anybody else? All right, uh, next one is um, a pledge uh, to open, well, not to open necessarily, but like a pledge that we would take that Ruby would like to talk about.
Okay, so um, you should have the pledge in front of you, and so it's basically just a pledge for us as um, city council to um, be able to make sure that we are all on one accord, uh, that we are respecting our citizen. And because what happened is, I just got from a conference, and this is just not, just from the conference, but they talked about a lot, what we do up here affects the citizen. If we acting crazy or whatever, they're going to do the same thing. If they, if we disrespecting each other, they're going to do the same thing. So the only thing I, I wanted to bring the pledge so we can look at it and see. We also have, and I think I have shared this book with everybody, where it says fifty surviving tips are things that we should and should not do. And it's important that we all should go to training, because we learn from others, and we learn about what the updates, things that they have out here for us, in order for us to control, not control, but to be the kind of citizen that we need to be in respects, respectful way. And so I wanted to bring this pledge and give you all the opportunity to look at it and see if this is something that we can adopt.
Anybody have any thoughts, or? I'm, I'd be happy to pledge something like that.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, thank you.
I'd um, uh, I would, now, having, I just received this, the text of this today for review, for review, for review. But uh, going to, um, not to jump this, and maybe we're just skipping around here, but uh, on agenda item five, continuing process discussion, where I wanted to go back to the thing I proposed loud, that I circulated last month. But what I wanted to circulate this month, uh, or, or propose to circulate is that um, uh, do you mind if I speak on that, just briefly, because it feels like, it feels like we should be working together.
Okay.
Uh, the Code of Ordinance anticipates the city will adopt ethic, uh, an ethics ordinance. Uh, in the city charter, an express power of the city government is quote, "to provide for ethics and disclosures," unquote. And in Article One, uh, Section one point oh three nine of the Code of Ordinance is quote, "ethics." "To adopt ethics ordinances and regulations governing the conduct of municipal elected officials, appointed officials, and employees, establishing procedures for ethics complaints and setting forth penalties for violations of such rules and procedures," unquote. And in look, uh, th- this was just one of the things that, this long list of process stuff that came out of the moratorium. And um, and in looking into it, uh, only we and Palmetto in the county don't have an ethics ordinance. So we're kind of real late to that game, and so um, uh, G M A has an elaborate guide to ethics. Uh, we got a little bit of training there, because we're the new guys and had to go down to Athens and get some training from G M A and heard the city of ethics stuff, and so what I was going to suggest in that next item, which we can, we'll just, I guess that makes, we touch on very briefly, but maybe we could uh, uh, based on the G M A stuff, it sounds like we could come up with a nice body of text that we could then circulate before the next meeting. If, is that, is that, Rick, can you do that? Right, that's what I've been working on.
Right, I can get that.
Okay, yeah.
We've brought that in, I brought that in once before, actually, easy to do.
Okay, well, we, and, and that way we can kind of, I mean, your text at a first read looks great, and so I thought, I mean, just work together and take things from anybody else.
No, it was good, I think it just that, that, just hearing um, the other um, like the fifty issue from other cities and stuff, and they talk about all the things that go on, and this is one of the things, and I'm like, okay, we definitely need that. And so that's why I wanted to bring it back, so that we can see, and like I said, I, I think I gave this book to everybody of fifty things that we should survive tips and stuff like that.
Yes, okay.
We need to, you know, we are the, we are the um, I guess they're the eyes of the city, and people are going to do what we see do.
Well, and I think it underlines the, you know, the trust of our, of our citizens to engage in, in that kind of stuff. So uh, so I'll, I will be in touch and we can, if anybody wants to contribute, can circulate something before the next meeting.
So Mike, so Rick, my question is, so we go from just a pledge, which seems something we would just adopt, versus the ordinance is just ex- extra steps with we, when we formalize that, is that what we're do, we would, we would be doing, taking this?
Above my pay grade. Um, I, I'll send you the ethics ordinance, a model ethics ordinance, so you could adopt this pledge that Ruby is um, suggesting to adopt the ethics ordinance, that'd be separate, you know, you could do it at the same time, but I mean, it's something different to look at, but I'll send it around, and then, you know, any comments you have, send them back to me. Uh, I can finalize a draft, if that's what council wants, you consider and vote on it.
And I'll email this out to everyone, so you have a uh, copy um, on email. And even with the ethics class, you don't actually have to go to the um, classes, you can actually do that online. And that would give you another overall view of what's what.
So would we have like a pledge and an ordinance at the same time, or what do you sugge?
Let's look at the, the documents, let's look at the ordinance, the ethics ordinance, let's look at the pledge, compare them side by side, and then council give me direction, and then I'll draft up whatever you guys want me to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But Ruby, I like it as a guiding policy, I think. I know we had discussed this a couple of years ago, and I don't think we had a total agreement to do much with it, and that's why. So we've got, I think we did, we had discussed it as a city up here, we had discussed it, it just didn't go anywhere.
Yeah, I've seen that happen over the years, but I, it seems more than time.
Yeah, no, right, for sure.
Right. Thank you for bringing this.
Yeah, Ruby, that sounds great. You put our oath of office in here, I don't see any reason to not read that out loud. But yeah, that is good, we do need some parameters, that's been uh, but if it's just us in Palmetto, we kind of play catch up. Appreciate it.
All right, uh, next one is meeting agenda, policy, submission policy, uh, Councilman Pete.
Yeah, so if you look on the following page, look on the following page, um, item number four. That's just the whole, I hope you've read that, I hope we get this on the agenda maybe next month. It's going to help with clarity, it's going to help with quality control for the agenda, it's going to help with open meeting, making sure we abide in our accordance with open meeting laws, et cetera. It's pretty straightforward. And um, take a look at it.
It is, I, yeah, I like it, I think a lot of it, I mean, you know, the, the charter is pretty clear that a council member or a mayor can put something on the docket. Um, and, and yes, this is, this is good work, but I've, I've always seen us kind of bring something forward. And if it has traction, we want more discussion on it, kind of like what we just did right now. You're asking me to go home, like if I had done my, you know, my presentation to do this, I'm not a developer, you know? It's just uh, a lot of it, in my opinion, and, and no disrespect, Rodney, it just seems like putting the cart before the horse. I mean, it says all proposed agenda items must be submitted to the mayor, city clerk by Friday, seven business days prior to the meeting, no later than four P M. We do that. Backup documentation, reports, contracts, presentations must accompany the agenda submission. I mean, I, I think uh, you know, for introducing a topic, a brief summary, what we need coming in here, so I say, hey, I know what Ms. Foster is talking about, she's uh, talking about a code of ethics, what's your purpose? It always has an end goal. You know, you have a, a clear title, that'd be the name of it, a brief summary or staff report. Um, I think if I put it on there, or you put it on there, I don't know what opinion the staff has unless they call me. I mean, why even ask the staff unless it has traction, or I don't know how they're involved in my thinking, till I involve them. Um, contact person or department, well, I guess that would be if the city approaches us. But a contact person, that would automatically be whoever put it on there. Um, we're, we're, we're a council, I mean, the mayor and city clerk or city, this is what it says, review and approval. Mayor and city clerk or city manager, or their designee, will review submissions for completeness, appropriateness, and clarify, clarify before inclusion on the final agenda. Late or incomplete submissions may be deferred to a future meeting unless deemed urgent by the mayor. And also, they want a supporting documents in a P D F form. Um, last I checked, um, we are a city council ran government. The city manager runs the city, based upon what the council says to do with a meet, weak mayor. That's how our government is set up. Um, so for a s- city manager, a city clerk, or the mayor to dictate the topic of what a council member might want to talk about, seems like this is nothing more than just a, another hard way to create unnecessary work to put topics in front of the citizens that need to be discussed. And the truth is, a lot, just like Mr. Light's, we just, we just started talking about this, you know, massive Peachtree City. Um, he made it real clear, are we prepared to do that? Probably not. We do need some experts in the room. I'll be talking about a permitting board later, but, but either way, that's, that's my two cents, I think a lot of this we already do. Um, it, it just seems unnecessary.
Anyone else got any comments?
Well, I like the idea, because I think it really is helpful to have documentation to look at with when someone's going to speak on any topic. And a, a couple of times, we haven't had anything, and it's, I don't, I don't think that's um, good for us or for citizens.
And, and again, I, I think you're talking here about like, on the, the agenda, the council acting agenda. Or are you talking about session two?
Well, this mostly the city council agenda.
Yeah.
It lets everybody know what's coming, it's crystal clear, there are guidelines, if something needs to come on there last minute, that's protecting property or lives, et cetera, that's still allowed, but it does set some guidelines, and it's um, it seems appropriate.
This, this idea that we keep talking about, about transparency, right? If we're going to put something on the agenda, it should have some backup, so that people know what the heck it is we're talking about, makes sense.
Well, and, and ma- maybe something that should be noted there is that not every, you know, some things can have backup or documentation and so on, but other things, I think a s- a simple summary or rationale
Sure.
is, is sufficient, as long as people know what's coming. I also, I mean, just starting it, the, just, just reading, reading down it when I got it, uh, it begins to say to ensure transparency, efficient meeting preparation, and compliance with applicable laws and regulations. Um, which laws and regulations are we not meeting, like sort of, what's the problem we're solving?
I think it's going to ensure that people have the information early as we can get it to them. It's nothing last minute, and we go to that effort, and this is kind of puts that down in black and white, so there's really no question.
Well, what could we do to?
Open, open meeting laws in some instances, the, the idea that you put items on without people being able to know what they are, and therefore they don't show up to come, give their opinion or whatever.
Right.
Open meeting laws. Open meeting laws would say that you want to make sure that it's clear what you're getting ready to vote on.
Right.
I don't think that people are confused about anything with my vote. No.
Well, just.
Well, if they don't know.
Oh, they know.
Go ahead, Scott. I've just, well, I'm, you know, I'm just looking at the document itself and and maybe I'll ask in a moment for some clarification regarding something that that Richie just, Councilman Schmidt just mentioned, but then it says regarding the timeline. That it's to get things in in time. But then that time, the timeline is subject to the mayor, city clerk or city manager or their designee, which we need, it sounded like Richie wants to address that. And then later in section four, changing the agenda, it says a late addition to the public's agenda shall not be allowed except in a course of emergency situation, which shall be defined as a sudden unforeseen happening. But what's the threshold? Is there, Rick, is there law to codify or clarify that?
Right. You cannot add an item to the agenda less than 24 hours before the start of the meeting unless.
So that's up to nobody's discretion.
Right. That's state law.
Okay.
Unless it is an emergency or something that has to be addressed, you know, that you didn't know of before the the 24 hour period. And it could have been something like as simple as this amicus brief. If we got word of that yesterday and I went, oh, geez, we have to vote on this before, I think, the 24th of July or something like that, and we don't have another meeting, then, you know, I could present that to the council and say, you know, does the council want to have this heard? Yes, I know you. I got, you have to take a vote. So the law would permit us to amend the agenda in that regard. But if it's something else that we knew about, and let's, let's say it's, it's the mileage rate, okay? We knew about way in advance and we just didn't advertise it, didn't put it on our agenda less than 24 hours before. Then the law says, no, you cannot talk about it, council. You'll have to have another meeting that's properly advertised. So there is state law on it. And but it does deal with emergencies, you know, property life or something that just was unforeseen. And then, you know, you really want to get my opinion on it before you guys added it. Because what you do want to do is comply with the open meetings law, obviously, but you want to make sure that the public sees what's happening before the meeting happens.
Right. It just seemed to lack, that part needs definition, like if what is a threshold for an emergency and so on. So to to your point, we would need more clarity there.
Well, and and I don't know, Scott, if you could ever define every type of emergency.
No, of course.
Right. You just have to take each one as it comes up and say, well, does this, you know, smell like, walk like, sound like an emergency?
Right. I'm sure the thing like Rodney and I have completely different ideas of emergency.
I think, I think the level of consequence.
Go ahead.
No, is, is there anything else on that one?
Uh, yeah, well, just back to that issue of the, this document gives the mayor or the city manager essentially full control of the agenda. It looks like, I mean, as written in section three, review and approval. To me, that almost looks like a veto power kind of thing. And so I would think that would need some work so that so that it's not just the mayor decides what's on the agenda, the council decides what's on the agenda. And I don't know how you do that, Rick. I'm sure could advise us, but.
Well, I never get it, the charter for the way the charter.
Well, and the way I, the way I read it, excuse me, mayor, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right.
I I see that only for completeness, appropriate, maybe appropriateness, I don't know, completeness and clarity or something. At least that, you know, okay, we've got all the documentation. It's not, it should not be a veto power given to either the the mayor or the city manager or anybody else. But to look at and say, whoa, wait a minute, we don't have.
Right.
I don't know, whatever documentation, backup documentation is needed for clarity. Maybe there needs to be a provision in here to say, well, wait a minute, I have the ability to to come back to the mayor or the city manager and say, wait a minute, that's all there is. There aren't any other backup documents or something. So that might need a little tweaking, but I do think that it is appropriate to have somebody at the gate to say, okay, this, this is complete. This is ready to go. Put it in the agenda and then, you know, we'll talk about it at the meeting. But as far as maybe determining what's appropriate, may maybe, that may be too far. I know.
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
I said, maybe determining the appropriateness of something is a, is a bridge too far.
Yeah.
Is this, has this been a, been a problem? Has anybody just keep shoving stuff at you at the last minute?
Well, I think, well, that's.
Is that a yes or no? Yeah, just anybody.
I think.
Maybe Ms. White.
I think the, if I can look at it from a 30,000 foot level and, you know, Diane can attest and Mike can attest to any late items that come in at a certain deadline is, you know, we want you guys to have this binder in your hands on the Wednesday before the Tuesday meeting. We want you to have this in your hands. So that way you can review it and read it and say, you know what? On Sunday night, I was watching a Braves game and I read something in here, da, da, da. Well, if you show up here Tuesday and we hand you, I hand you something or another council member hands something out. Let's say Ruby came and she had this in advance, but let's say she came in to hand this out to you and like, wow, this is the first time I've seen this. I really can't comment on it. It's not fair to you guys if you don't have an opportunity to read it and comment on tonight. So we just want to have this in your hands Wednesday as a complete document. That's really, I think. And we expect that, I expect that of my staff. And Diane, we know she expects that of us.
And and we understand that. We do. I mean, this was just, she handed us the oath and it's, it's something good to remind yourself of and to put into policy. Nobody's handing in anything. I mean, we, we, we follow this. People follow this. I mean.
Not necessarily.
The only thing that gets handed in, like Rick said, is really just kind of old plate material. Something that maybe Fulton County needs or the dog catcher in Fulton County. It's always last minute stuff that we're aware of. I just, I think this is totally a waste of people's time unless whatever the topic is, has a little traction. We can have a conversation without doing all that to see if we, if it's even worth talking about. This is it's unnecessary. And and I would never vote for that. That's just my two cents.
Again, I don't think it's. Action items, it makes perfect sense, right? We can talk about whatever we want to an work session.
I mean, I think it, I still stand behind it. I think it's, that's very clear, but everybody doesn't have to agree. And according to Ruby's pledge, number two, disagree and be respectful. Yeah. He disagrees. I'm respectful. I don't want it to move forward.
It's a, it's not a high bar, I don't think.
All right.
And we've had examples. There are examples, Richie, of not getting information upfront.
There are. Yeah. Yeah. So we, what we do then is what we always do. We table it, defer it, get our information. Remind the person who ever didn't give it to us, be respectful, give it to us next time so we don't waste time. That's what we do.
But I think like the mayor said, there might be people that would like to be here and hear it if they knew it was on the agenda and what that that topic was going to be discussed. If it's not there, they can't, they don't know.
What was the, and I understand that. I'm just saying, what was the last one?
The last one was like your presentation when I, as I recall, that you did about your plan. And I had asked you in advance, as I recall.
Yeah.
And you said, you'll hear about it that day. I had no information. I asked you specifically and you didn't provide me anything or any, we didn't. I didn't have anything in this packet.
Yeah, well.
That particular, and I'm just, that's how I recall that incident.
Okay. Well, I mean, you, you are.
That to me is not appropriate for the citizens and for us.
Well, what I did was I told the citizens that following month, I would bring forth an idea that I had that would actually complete our three major goals. And that's what I did. And as you could see, the message got out because the room was packed. And anyway, moving forward, I'm having three town hall meetings this month and we'll get into that later. Where unfortunately I had some surgery, folks. I was down a little bit. Good to go. So, yeah, we'll get in those conversations and you'll have the opportunity to sit through three of them. And whatever questions you have, they will be answered.
Well, I just want to say I apologize for giving y'all this to last minute today. But I think if we do have a guideline, it'll help this period.
And again, work session conversations are different from action items or public presentations during the work, the actual working meeting. So that difference should be taken into account, whatever the policy is. Can we move on? Next one up is.
Have one, one, one question. Well, no, go ahead. No, we're good. We're good. I know. We're good.
All right. The process discussion that we've been having, there's two different pieces of this, Scott.
Yeah. So again, just ongoing process issues. And what I'd like to do, I asked every, I circulated at the last meeting. And I'd like to go down to to number two, Rob, Robbie on number one procurement recommendations. Robbie and I, I feel like can go back and forth over that.
I'm sorry, Scott, I'm not clear on what you.
Oh, item five. The following items are presented for consideration for a uniform process for drafting, presenting, discussing and adopting or not various amendments to the UDC, et cetera.
And I get that. So, so I'm sorry, which pieces are you?
So I'd like to look at the second item down there, number two, code amendment recommendations.
Okay.
The following recommendations build upon the goal of full and complete clarity and transparency of city business, et cetera. And I circulated this, asking for comment so that at this meeting in the work session, you can make a motion to, if if there were no suggested amendments or anything to this, that we could then make a motion that city staff provide, you know.
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't make a motion, but we would direct them to do that.
Okay, recommend city staff provide language for an agenda item to approve through vote at the next council meeting.
So on the the five bullets that are in that one. Uh, I don't have a problem with any of them. It's, it's what we've been doing, you know, in this conversation that we've been having about the zoning updates that we've got, except for the middle one. Uh, the fact that there would have to be at least one special call meeting for each one of these, because there have been a lot of times in the past where zoning text changes are tiny, where we've got a sentence that doesn't say what it was meant to say and realize that, wait a minute, it's a double negative and it doesn't work that way. And we've made those kind of adjustments with just, you know, in the context of the normal process where we have zoning changes to meetings, public hearings and all of that. But just recognize.
You're talking about the top one on the back. For the, can I read it? Just so people, I'll read it because your microphone seems to be haunted today. All zoning text changes shall be considered in at least one meeting. Called specifically for the purpose of considering text amendments, this meeting shall be convened at a date and time outside of normal business hours. So as to allow for citizens to have opportunities to participate in the review, a minimum of two calendar weeks notice shall be given. Now, that, the text here doesn't refer to a meeting per change.
No, what I'm saying is that, again, if it's one of those really minor changes, just doing it in our normal meeting process, our, our evening meetings are outside of normal working hours and all of that. I don't think that that should be a requirement for any text change. That's all I'm saying. To have a special call meeting. That's all I'm saying. I'm just offering an opinion.
I think, I, I guess that that's intended, I think, because we had, when we had the real discussion of this, we were doing it at 3:30 in the afternoon when everybody's at work. And I think that the the concern of making sure it's all done before the public.
In in the way that, I mean, we could anytime we want, say that any particular thing we're looking at is big enough to require a special call meeting that we could schedule at six instead of 3:30 or whatever, that I agree with. What I'm saying is to make it a requirement for everything, including when there's like one of those scribe nerds errors that we're correcting, doesn't make sense to me.
Maybe we could include some threshold language.
Threshold language or just, again, the council has the ability to call that anytime they want.
Okay. Well, uh, so do we have general agreement that we could recommend to staff that to produce, you know, Rick and everybody to produce the language that we could then vote on as a agenda item in the next meeting to amend our processes?
Well, the, the one thing I want to add about the special call meetings for text amendments, the text amendments to your uniform, uniform development code require advertising, they have to follow the ZPA, the zoning procedures act.
Okay.
So there's a state law that governs any type of amendment to your, to your, to the text of the zoning ordinance.
I think he's suggesting in addition to.
Right. So, well, but again, I want to make sure that we comply with the ZPA.
I get it. But what he's talking about is having a work session meeting basically to talk through those changes before we go through the official process of making the change.
But but all, but all text amendments, Scott, would require a public hearing.
They do.
Okay, right. Rodney, did you say something? Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you. And then the, and the other, the other item procurement recommendations. Robbie, Robbie sent a set of of red text that sometimes quotes current practice, sometimes is is comment. And and unfortunately, I've not had time to go through that set because he was out of town, I was out of town. And so I'd like, I'd like to revisit that one next work session because I'm, I'm not prepared because I haven't had a discussion with Robbie about, about those acquisitions. Um, for, further than in this, in this section, I, I I, I spoke with a local resident, Kevin Parker, who gave a, who, talking about traffic studies and looking at the, at and this, and this also speaks to what I was talking about in the, in the discussion of the rezoning and in our need for outside competencies to pick out issues that are, that bear on the health and public safety and welfare of the city as we're going through these processes. And 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 Mr. Parker had put together a little, a presentation on on the ASHTO standards as they, you know, he was taking them from the Merrill Rico application that was deferred for six months at the last meeting. But.
But tell him what ASHTO is, Scott. I don't think most of.
Well, I'd, I'd like Mr. Parker to give us a quick presentation, which.
Well, so, so, so hang on, just where we are, right? Six o'clock. Richie has said that he's fine deferring the item that he had on there till the next month. We can absolutely hear from the, the traffic expert. The other one too was the Atlanta watershed thing. Rick, you want to talk about that real quick? Because that is a ongoing and pressing issue.
Right. And and I have the attorney for Jeff Lindsay Holmes here as well.
I'm going to interrupt you for one second. Folks, what happens when our work session, which happens before the regular meeting runs long, is we just keep going till we're done? We'll take a quick break, just bathroom break after that, and then we'll go right back to the, the regular meeting. So if you're here for the regular meeting, you're wondering why we're already talking. That's, that's what's going on.
So can we hear from?
Just right, right after Rick, Rick's agenda item. And then, yes, absolutely.
Wait, we're breaking into one agenda item for another agenda?
No, yours is the last one. And then there's one before, after the, after the procedural recommendations, we have the.
Oh, this, oh, I, I thought this went to processes.
No.
No, oh, I see. It was moved, never mind. My apologies.
Sorry. No, that's fine. That's fine. So, sorry.
So we have an issue here, like a catch 22, really. Um, the city requires all streets in subdivisions to be private. Well, we like to have utilities that come into these subdivisions such as water. Uh, Atlanta Water doesn't want to have its lines inside a private easement. It requires it to be a public easement. In other words, owned by the city. So the mayor has been working with representatives of the city of Atlanta in an attempt to try and get the water department to understand that, look, we're going to just have the utility lines out in the right of way, but it right of way is going to belong to the homeowners association out the city. And Atlanta Water Department has not come to the table and said, yeah, we're willing to to do that. So we either have no water service in our subdivisions, the ones that have been approved, or we have to figure out another way. So the attorney for Jeff Lindsay Holmes has come up with a proposal, an idea. I want to run it by council to get your thoughts on it. If you agree with it, then I'll work with the attorney and come up with the exact ordinance resolution, how we'll, how we'll address it. But basically it would be this, city would accept the, the streets, the right of way from the developer as required by Atlanta Water. But simultaneously, the homeowners association enters into a contract with the city, says that it will maintain the roads on behalf of the city and it will have to have a sinking fund. And it'll have to prove each year that enough money is being put aside so that it can repair the roads, et cetera, et cetera. You know, okay, that, that could solve the problem as long as we can verify that the homeowners association. You know, okay, that, that could solve the problem as long as we can verify that the homeowners association has enough money. It puts some risk on the city. Um, but really I think we're between a rock and a hard place. If we're going to allow, uh, these subdivisions to come in, the developments to come in. And Atlanta Water is saying it's not going to put its lines, uh, in anything that's not dedicated to the public. In other words, to the city, uh, we're going to have to come up with, uh, a, an agreement like this. And, uh, so it makes sense to me. It does have some risks to the city. We'll have to monitor these every year. Uh, to make sure that the homeowners, homeowners association does have a proper sinking fund and have sufficient monies to take care of the roads. Um, I do have Steven here. If Steven wants to get up, if you want to say anything, um, on Jeff Lindsay's side.
I do want to say too, that I've been trying for three years now to get Atlanta watershed to change their position on this. But they've had several different directors in that time. And even the mayor of Atlanta is not able to get that change to happen yet. Um, at some point we will correct that because you know, the sewer, Fulton County sewer is fine with the easement. Everybody else is fine with the easement. It's only Atlanta watershed that's the difficulty. But in the meantime, people are stuck because of it. Sorry, sorry, go ahead.
That, that's exactly correct, Mayor. And we appreciate all the efforts you've made to try to break the logjam with Atlanta Water. Uh, they have been very stubborn. The proposal that Rick and I have discussed and should the council approve of tonight, we think is a great fix to this. Um, as to the sinking fund, some of the ideas that we'd had is not just, you know, your standard H O A dues, but perhaps a percentage of a home's sales price goes into the sinking fund. We would record a document in the real estate records to ensure that for that home to actually close, that that money gets remitted to that sinking fund. So then the city's got assurances that there is a sustainable funding mechanism to keep it up. Should council also direct Rick to proceed with this tonight? What, um, Jeff Lindsay Homes and I would look at, Mr. Nicholson, uh, the developers here with me. We would project out what that maintenance would look like over the life cycle and project out what the annual approximate turnover or resale of these homes are. So that we can then back that into what that fund needs to be periodically and give you some guidance and, and, um, some information so that you can be assured that the sinking fund will be adequately funded. Finally, to Rick's point, um, we have included in there a provision that, uh, the H O A would annually provide the city with a report of the balance of that account. So that you can see that the balance is tracking so that it's sufficiently funded over time. Uh, in conclusion, I'll just say that, you know, we appreciate your efforts, uh, to resolve this issue. We think this is a great, uh, practical solution to move this forward. If you have any questions of me or Jeff Lindsay communities, be happy to answer those. Thank you so much for your consideration.
So you're talking about adding these funds into a H O A that's already existing or what, how is this?
It, it would be a new H O A, Councilwoman. So our specific subdivision that we have, and, and we've looked at other properties in the city, we have a phase one, which those street, those streets are public already. In phase two, which is we own it, but it's presently undeveloped. We would develop that and create a separate entity to fund that. We, alternatively, we may add that to the first H O A, but we would have special provisions for the portion of the subdivision that has private streets. And they would have their own separate sinking fund that would be used to maintain those streets over their life cycle.
How does the fund not, not run out of money?
But, right, so.
Does the fund not run out of money?
That's what I was talking about, Councilman, is if you direct, or should it be council's decision to direct Rick to proceed with this option? What we'll do is we'll look at the maintenance cost of those roads over their life cycle. As the developer will install the roads, right? But we'll project out what the maintenance cost will be over the next ten, twenty, thirty years. We'll then reverse engineer what the funding needs to be to adequately capitalize that sinking fund. And that sinking fund could be funded through regular annual dues like any other H O A account. Alternatively, one thing that we've looked at, because we anticipated the council might have some concerns, because let's be honest, people don't always pay their H O A dues, right? What we could do is impose a deed restriction on the properties that says every time a property is sold, a certain percentage to be determined based on what that cash flow projection looks like shall be transferred directly to the H O A sinking fund. And what that does is it guarantees that when a house is transferred, that sinking fund gets funded. There's no option about it for the closing attorney to release the property and record the deeds and disperse funds. He's going to have to disperse whatever that percentage is into the sinking fund. Again, we haven't gotten that far into projecting out what that should be, and that number's going to be different for every subdivision based on, you know, expected sales price, expected appreciation, expected turnover, those kinds of things. But conceptually, that mechanism could work. So we'd ask you to.
So, yeah, again, the question is, there's, there's a lot of math that has to be done to come back with a final product for council to vote on, but is it even something that you want to consider? You're, you're stuck on some of those developments in the meantime without that.
I don't think we're in any position to make a decision on this at all. I don't know what you just said. And, and I would want to get far more educated as a decision maker before I to move forward with anything.
Councilman, uh, I'm not asking you to make a final decision on anything. I'm just asking for authority for Rick and I to continue the discussion and draft formal documents and to prepare a formal package for you to review in advance of the meeting and consider.
I feel like I would, I feel like I would want to, I, I need, I need to know more before voting something like.
Well, you would know more.
I would like to know more before I, I, I don't like being asked to vote and trust me to then do something.
We're not voting on anything. So we're not voting on anything. We're just asking, he's just asking whether we can even look at this possibility. That's all they're asking for.
And, and the possibility is adding, I guess, to their deed to guarantee.
That's one of the ways.
I mean, because it's easy to add anything to a deed.
What are the potential encumbrances to the city? Do we incrementally become some kind of weird utility? Or like, I, I don't even understand what the variables are.
And, and Rick and I had discussed that. One thing that we've thought about putting in this document, and, and again, this is just to give you the thirty thousand foot view. Rick and I have not gotten granular on this. We haven't discussed the numbers for this specific development. We haven't discussed or drafted the specific provisions. This is really just informational to make sure y'all are okay proceeding to the next investigative step before you authorize the execution of those final documents, which again, haven't been drafted. Um, one thing councilman likes to, that we've talked about is that part of that H O A document, the maintenance agreement for the publicly dedicated roads. Let's say that the H O A would indemnify defendant whole harmless the city with respect to any liability arising out of those public streets. And again, you would have a separate sinking fund that's specially set aside to cover those things. So not only maintenance, but the H O A's obligations under that separate maintenance agreement with the city.
Those are the risks. The risks are two. One, that for whatever reason, sinking fund wasn't properly capitalized. You don't have enough money when it comes time to pave the road or whatever. The other is if there's liability that comes attached and that's a potential workaround for that.
So, so, so let me say, so you're kind of treating it like an impact fee, just putting it on the deed.
It pretty much, yeah, I mean.
That's a way to circumvent impact fees too.
I mean, it's not building permit.
Put it up underneath another account and use it. Yeah, thank you.
And, and so this isn't just an issue that's about our development in the second phase of our subdivision. This is a systemic issue as to what Rick said. Where the city does not want to own public streets because of the maintenance costs. However, the city of Atlanta will not provide public water unless the roads are publicly dedicated. This is a legal workaround which solves both those problems.
Why, why won't the watershed? Did we not figure that out beforehand or did we have an agreement? It went south or what?
They used to do it.
They used to do it. They don't do it anymore.
So they just changed policy.
They changed policy and the mayor has worked extensively to try to get them to change their mind. I had, I had them to maybe, they went to a hard no. The mayor continued to push and went to the mayor of the city of Atlanta. And even Andre Dickens couldn't get his water department to move. That's why we're at an impasse. That's why this is before you, because as long as the, uh, Atlanta watershed department continues with this policy, residential development in the city served by Atlanta Water is impossible. So it's not just us, but we're willing to bear the cost and expense of creating this mechanism, which then we hope can be a form for other residential developments as they proceed forward.
And, and to be clear, it's not impossible. It's difficult because there are two workarounds that are both really expensive unless you're ready to do them. One is to master meter and be the utility yourself for the development. And the other is to run two sets of pipes for everything. But you still have to master meter. I mean, it's basically whether or not you want to be utility and, and on a small subdivision that doesn't pencil. So that, that's that's the.
So it's just a matter of buying for the buck, not enough customers.
That's right.
That's really what it amounts to to them.
And it increases exorbitantly the ultimate cost to the home buyer. So when you're looking at homes within the city, if they were master metered or had double looped, compared to other jurisdictions that aren't, do not have to do that, you know, you've got a competition issue.
So again, if the, the only question here is should they keep talking about this and try to bring us something or not?
Yeah, I should defer till.
I think so.
Know more before making that decision.
Well, I think, uh, me, I think y'all should be able to continue the discussion because we can know more and because folks need water in some way. So if we can see, hear about the options and what, what sort of lies ahead in the future for us to consider. So the faster we get started, the better to me.
Who here in our city has talked to the water people more than anybody? I'm just, I'm just wondering, I mean, if they're, if they're having a water business in our city. I got just trying, I guess, I, I don't know what to say. I mean, that seems like something I checked before I built. I don't know. Uh, that sounds like a nightmare to me. I'm like trying to blow up that, was that that big rock, Merrill's property? Yeah, that's a nightmare.
Okay, so we're going to move on to something else. Uh, we may come back and ask you to do a little more work on presenting so that people can be more informed about what the process is because we're stuck right now. Uh, thanks very much.
Mayor, to be clear, will you address this later in the work session or?
No.
Regular session?
Um, we'll, we'll talk afterward. We're, we're stuck right now and I'm not going to waste any more time on it. At the moment, thank you, sorry. You're good, what? Oh, okay. All right. So next thing was the roadway discussion.
Yes, Mr. Parker. And, and thank you, thank you for joining us and being willing to do this. I appreciate it. I found it. I, I found your initial sketch of it to me very educational. And so it seems like the sort of thing we should learn.
Sit down on this table right here, sir.
Testing one, two. Okay, thank you for having me. Um, I'm going to read my three minute, uh, speech and then we'll talk about maybe some of the details here so we can read this if we possibly can. Uh, my name is Kevin Parker. I own a home at seven, six, five, zero Rico Road. I'm here because I'm very concerned for my family and this community at large. The traffic study performed by A and R Engineering gave a recommendation on page twenty-three, seven dot one. You scroll it up. And you'll see that recommendation right there. It's the very last thing in the study. Um, it said, um, to provide and confirm adequate site distance for Ashto standards. Ashto stands for the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials. They want you to provide and they want you to confirm. Provide means to give something that is needed or wanted. Confirm means to make it certain, often by providing evidence, verifying it or making it official. That recommendation doesn't sound obligatory to me. Right? I mean, it sounds mandatory. It's already facts and evidence. That's what they want you to do. And so my concern today is, I just want to show you how far we are off the actual standards. According to Ashto standards, the minimum line of sight for a vehicle taking a left turn while stopped at an intersection with a two lane road is five hundred feet. That's what we have today. That's coming off Vernon Grove Road. It's two hundred and sixty feet. And if you're turning off Rico Lake Drive, it's only three hundred and twenty feet. Okay, and that's seven point five seconds distance. What they're really trying to measure is time. So the distance is, is really it's, the distances is irrelevant. Time is going to be the independent variable because there's two components to that equation. The first component is your reaction time. And they give you two and a half seconds for you to react. Should I stay? Should I go? The Mack truck is a Porsche nine eleven. Can I beat it? Can I make the light? Is it going to turn yellow? Is it going to turn red before I go through? We do it every day, hundreds of times, if not thousands. So that first two and a half seconds is critical. But here's the problem. This is what we're left with with the standard. The standard set at seven point five seconds because the first two and a half seconds is dedicated time direct to the threat. That means a vehicle traveling at forty-five miles per hour approaching that intersection has traveled a hundred and sixty-five feet of the two hundred and sixty feet available for hitting brakes. Leaving one point five seconds or ninety-five feet to fight for our lives. There's no chance. One point five seconds is not enough time to unbuckle, unlock, open the door and run for our lives. This is the reality that we deal with every day today. I think he can put it down if you'd like.
He's enjoying himself though.
Okay, so. And there's, it, they, they call it this little green book. It's not a little green book. It's nine hundred and twenty-eight pages of standards. There is a standard for everything. Here's the site distance at a right turn from a stop. This will be going on to Hudson Ferry coming out of Serenby. Right? And it's got the feet on there. But it's really all about time. So when we talk about this intersection, there's a couple of things that really changed today. We know that if it's only two hundred and sixty feet line of sight, that you're robbing us of time in today's environment. But what if we change that? And this is all, you know, based on the last traffic study. If we put heavy vehicles on this road, everything changes. You come up with a new equation here and heavy vehicles is anything from seventy-five foot truck, Mack truck, concrete truck. It's heavy vehicles. This is only, and it says passenger cars. Once we change the standard on this intersection that we just looked at, um, Ashto says to safely navigate this roadway, we need twelve point eight seconds or nine hundred and seventy-nine feet of site distance to be safe. Now, why is that? Why did it change? Because it takes five hundred and twenty-five feet to stop a fully loaded semi on the interstate. Five hundred and twenty-five feet. So even if that semi was coming around that corner and saw us immediately and reacted the second they saw us, they couldn't stop. We're dead. Now with heavy vehicles, we are operating this intersection at twenty-six percent of the Ashto site recommendation. But that's not dangerous enough. The proposal will increase the frequency by putting twenty-two percent of the population of our community through this death trap. And if that's not the craziest thing you've heard me say about this intersection, we're going to use the suboptimal infrastructure operating at twenty-six percent of the standard as an emergency evacuation route for a thousand people. Welcome to the broken city of Chattahoochee Hills. And I don't think that's what we want to be, is it? I don't think we want to be a broken city, but we're already broken. We need to make significant, significant investment in our infrastructure today without any development. I mean, our infrastructure is inadequate for what we have today without adding one additional person. This proposal is unacceptable and adequate to keep us safe. In fact, it's not even close to the standards required and recommended in the traffic study. Fifty-five percent of heavy vehicle deaths occur on rural roads. Can you, can you up the slide? Okay, that's, that's the intersection that we're talking about right there. There's two intersections. One's Hopkins, the other one's, um, Vernon Grove. And that's what you see up here. Keep going. And then one more. Yep. And then that's, that's what we saw on the, uh, the chart. Okay, now we get into, that's the, uh, Ashto study for large vehicles. Can you pop it up one more? Stop right there. Fifty-five percent of heavy vehicle deaths occur on rural roads while only twenty-five percent occurs on the interstate. The number one cause, you guessed it, it's the infrastructure. These big trucks, they can stop on the interstate. They can't stop on these rural roads. We don't even have shoulders on these roads. There's nowhere to go. There's nowhere to hide. I'm surprised the chair of the planning commission thinks so little about the lives and well being of the people.
No, wait a minute, wait a minute.
What's that?
This is, this is not the meeting that we're having right now. You're, you were sold as an expert on Ashto that was.
I'm not a next.
No, I said he was a resident who had.
Resident experts, but.
I read, I read the report.
But my, my point is.
Did, did the guy in the planning committee read the report? Because he voted for it. Did did the guy in the planning committee read the report? Because he voted for it.
Would you please stick to?
I won't.
Facts.
At my price, he gave us one point five seconds to save our lives when the standard is drastically higher, drastically higher. We're not talking about a standard between nine seconds and ten. We're talking about, you've got somebody on a committee that's making decisions, and he's putting our lives at risk. It's not good. You have a duty to maintain safe roads. I'm here to give you a notice of hazard. That's what this is. The proposed development itself will create and significantly contribute to this hazard. Please advocate for us. We voted for you by trusting that you would keep us safe. We want you to provide and confirm. That you're gonna give us twelve point eight seconds to fight for our life instead of one point five. That's how far we are off the standard.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. The reason I wanted, the reason I wanted us to do that is because I attended every single meeting on this. And the and on the on on that, and this speaks to something that has come up again and again. In in these processes, and and that's why I raised, I actually imagined this to be under number uh agenda item five. The process issues, because we we, you know, you can raise your eyebrows all you like and roll your eyes and so on. But there are things that don't get mentioned, don't get picked out. We we don't have the kind of review. That, I mean, did anybody hear anything in any of those meetings? We voted to defer the the project.
That was one of the open questions I heard. But go on.
But well, yeah, I raised the Ashto, the Ashto standards as something that needed to be dealt with. But I thought we should hear it as an example of the kinds of concerns that come up, that we are not educated enough to to pick out on our own. And and this is, so the reason I I bring this, and I and I thank you very much for your for your presentation. Is that what it what it is writ large on the city in terms of our processes? Is a very strong argument for getting third party advising. And combing over our applications, our presentations and packets so that they come before us. With all the information that we need to make those decisions. I don't even know if if there's this liability fall to the city.
Hundred percent, a hundred percent. It one hundred percent does.
So I, yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
The city, the city is responsible to adhere to those standards. So if we openly.
You guys, it's it's already fact and evidence. They've already said that you're gonna provide and you're gonna convert them this, right? That's what you're gonna do. You're gonna do that for us.
Yeah, well, thank you. I appreciate.
Thank you.
And I hope and I hope my colleagues will consider what I've been saying in the before and now that that. This is all a very powerful argument, I would hope, for the acquisition, the habitual, regular acquisition. Of third party external review to prepare information so that we know what we're looking at.
And to be clear, just so that people understand what our actual process is, and you can see the implications of it in places in the city. Uh, go down and look at the turn lane that was put in on Tommy Lee Cook at the southern entrance to Serenby. That was something, I mean, there is a whole engineering step that happens too, where those traffic mitigations are designed, standards they're designed to. That's after things get approved. It's just the condition is it has to be done to the standard, and then the engineers make sure it's done to the standard. That stuff happens. It does.
I under I understand that, but I do think our decision-making processes should be affected by these considerations. By being made aware of them as the process unfolds rather than only after.
No, and and I'll add this. I um, I think that's what our community is about. Whether we're in a work session, council meeting, you fell out a card, take time out to educate yourself to help inform the citizens. I appreciate that. Why? Because that's what we're begging for right now, is we want some third party oversight. It's necessary. Processes have to be clear, that you and I can read it in a kindergarten book. Things don't have to be complicated. Um, Mr. Lightsey, I appreciate you reaching out and finding this man, and I appreciate the information, sir. Because as you can tell, this this book, I mean, I don't care who you are, no matter how long you sit up here, what you put in it. Week's not enough to digest it. You can read it three or four times, but there's a lot going on, a lot of moving parts. So um, thank you for that, sir.
All right. Uh, we are done with our work session. We're gonna take a five minute break, and then you come back and start the regular meeting.